I'll come back and get signature from the Yeah. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm just.
No, I can be calm down because I'm very frustrated. The frigging TVs went out and went in my HPC meeting and it's that whole deck of box that that's going to gather so.
It's recording.
What do you do that? Just stand by here. I don't care. I don't care where we do.
Nothing about. They're stay home.
Stay home.
Don't you sit there.
Um, Mayor, I can hear you, but we can't see City Hall.
It's not on yet.
Okay. We always have this problem here every single time, every single.
Why is it not working? Do you have the idea?
It's just loading. It's not the program. I tried restarting it and it worked for like.
So have you been real busy?
But it just, it's bad. Yeah. I would say if I had to guess, we'd probably be a little down.
We can see you, Lori.
I know you're not supposed to. I'm sorry. I'm trying to flip it around.
I mean, you know, my, my crystal ball, but.
You got a bottle of Michelob for over thirty bucks the other day. That's pretty good.
You what? You probably put that in the tape.
They had a tasting at. They actually make a pretty mean Michelob there. Yeah, really. If you're into that kind of stuff.
I'm not, but thank you.
That's good. It's good. And their vodka. I went back after during the cleanup day. They gave a ten dollar off. Not mass liquors. I got a bottle of their vodka.
We're supposed to get ten percent off for helping out the community cleanup, but I never got my ten percent back.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
Especially when. Me and Greg buy.
Yeah.
That's not a small number.
Could be a hundred bottles.
I talked to him, Dave, but.
Could you hear us people on the internet?
They can see you, but you can't see them.
Sounds to have been great, actually.
Always.
First of all, I'm not sure what's written about this, but.
This looks good to me. I can see Tim, Max, Mayor, Christian.
Interesting. I had to. I was double duty. I didn't work until five.
Well, thank you for being on. You know, it's now it's just getting through these next few steps. I think we're gonna be fine.
Yeah, I think you're right. I didn't know how like all I wanted to hear was the commissioner needed. Mediator, fine with me.
She's been offering that for a while.
Lori, can you hear us?
It's been turned down. You should say that.
Can you hear us? But I think.
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Okay, I can't hear Gabby.
Okay, then they can't hear any of us anything.
Why can't we hear them? Speakers may not be on.
Long speakers. Yeah. Can you hear us? Oh, they Gabby can hear us.
But you can hear me.
Just listen to us nine hours. I understood that.
Can you hear me now? Oh, Sarah, you're on Zoom. So you okay.
All right. Can you guys say something real quick? Hi.
Yeah, can you hear me now? You can hear me?
Yeah. Technological success.
Great.
Mayor? Oh, okay. It is joint meeting.
So for a joint session, who do I? Do I call the order or does Mayor, do you call the order?
I don't know that it matters. I'll call this meeting to order at six oh nine PM on June the fourteenth, twenty twenty two. It's a joint session with City Council and Planning Zone. Take it away, Chair Bowler.
Um, do we need to have public comment for items not on the agenda? This is a work session?
Sure, we could ask for that.
No, I mean, it's on the agenda. I was asked. I was thinking of actually getting rid of it unless because we're talking about one specific thing tonight. So I assume people came for the agenda.
I understand, but I think anytime we have a public meeting.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
We should. We should entertain their comments.
That's fine. I'm.
Okay, roll call.
Other agenda revision.
Nope, roll call first.
Okay, go for it. Who's gonna do roll call? Lori, can you do roll call? Lori, Ty?
Yes, I've got both roll call.
Okay.
Okay. Did I put them together? Okay, no. Commissioner Law. Commissioner Weston. Commissioner Bauer. Commissioner Zoo.
Here.
Commissioner Powers.
Here.
Chair Bowler.
Here.
Alternate Tanis.
Here.
Mayor Lobby.
Here.
Councilmember Loretson.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Lorna Leo.
There.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Here.
Councilmember Fergency.
Present.
Mayor Lobby.
Still here.
Thank you.
Okay, my one agenda revision is at the beginning before we go into the discussion. I want Sarah, Sarah Day to give a quick overview of the permit numbers that are in the packet as a basis for the discussion. So we, it's really the only revision. I mean, it's kind of included as part of the item, so.
We'll entertain the motion. Go ahead, Tim.
What? What we're moving to. Add Sir Day. Sir Day's.
Like a short presentation of STR permits and such before the discussion.
So moved.
Okay.
Lobby seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes?
Aye.
Hearing none? Okay, let's go to public comments about items not on the agenda. I see we have a few guests today, so please raise your hand if you would like to speak and we can, you know, ask you to unmute your microphone to give your comment. If you're here for the agenda item, just stay tuned. Okay, I'm assuming everyone is here for the agenda item. Okay, we are at our, the discussion of short term rental regulations. So I just want to give a couple introductory remarks before Sarah gives her kind of data update, just so that council knows why we're coming back together. I think the planning commission and, you know, with the mayor as our liaison to the council and some conversations I've had with some council members. I think everyone was a little shocked when the short term rental numbers went from one forty one class twos to one seventy something. And just with my conversations around town and what I've been hearing, that the anti-short-term rental sentiment seems to be extremely strong at the moment. I'm not a Pollyanna in that it's not going to solve all of our affordable housing issues, but it seemed like this was the right time to have a joint discussion around whether additional measures were needed and if so, what the options are. Especially something that maybe is a quicker fix rather than a long, you know, nine-month ordinance rewrite. I'm looking for, you know, things that we could jointly implement in a few meetings. So that's my kind of introductory remarks, but I would like Sarah to go over the data basics before we dive in.
Go for it. Okay. It's a little bit of puppy witching hour at the moment, so I apologize in advance. Thank you, Council and Board. I've still been contract working for you all, conducting the short-term rental licensing. There's been a few just kind of outliers of people still finalizing details, but we have been, I think, on average, I'd say two to three times a week, maybe sometimes four, we get inquiries about the process to be added to the waitlist, the process of how often a license becomes available, et cetera. I did provide numbers that I believe that you have seen. I show that the host disabled participant screen sharing, so I'm not sure if you want to need to share the Excel sheet, but since I can't. We have twelve class ones, which are owner occupied, that have been processed for this year. I also just advanced another class one who provided proof of residency and signed the ownership affidavit, so they will be going through. So that's probably going to grow to thirteen. And there's about two or three others that have inquired at different levels, just kind of understanding what the process will look like. We have a hundred and ten full class twos process that are separate from the conditional use permit multiuses. So I broke it down separately because it is a little nuanced. So for your remembrance, if you have a class one, meaning you are a primary property owner that lives at your property, but you want to have more than one short-term rental license, you can do so and you can do it with two. In that case, and you have to go through a land use hearing for conditional use permit, which would look at the neighborhood impacts, parking, other elements that could be tied specifically to that property. It does sunset with the license and not the property, as is consistent with the short-term rental license ordinance that you all adopted in February of twenty one. And then if you are a class two, meaning you are a non-owner occupied and you want more than one license on one property or parcel, then there is what's kind of called and couched as the gap of two, which means you can either have one or you could advance to three or more. And then all of those are subject to the cap amount, whereas the class ones, one is to the cap amount if you get more than one. So it's a little bit complicated to explain that, but we have twenty-nine conditional use permits total. And those all, that's the number that counts towards the cap. So when you combine that with the class twos, we're at a hundred and forty-three for this year of what has been licensed and processed. Now, we kind of talked about this a couple months ago, that you, we increased the license count to the twelve percent because you have a twelve percent overall cap of available licenses that count against the cap that are attached directly to the inventory of how many residential homes or parcels we get or have from the assessor's office. And we kind of almost got two years in one year this year, and that's because we went with the number we were given in the fall before the ordinance was adopted in February of twenty one. So when we did the census with the assessor's office this January, it kind of represented certificate of occupancies for twenty, kind of what was a tail end of twenty twenty to twenty-one and all of twenty-one. And that gave us the opportunity to have a hundred and seventy-one with the existing cap that is in place that are either a class two, non-owner occupied, or one of those examples where it would be more than one going through a land use application. Okay, so kind of it looks like we have some room to accept people, but I, I had had a conversation with Lori Simonson, the city administrator. I also had kind of a touch base with Gabby Bowler as chair, and I think also the mayor. And so we've just been compiling a very robust waitlist. And how that works is I tie it directly to the email and phone call and an exchange to timestamp it, a date stamp it for the location, the end, the individual, their phone number, their contact information, and we keep them in a ranking order, you know, first come in. So we have a pretty robust waitlist and it keeps growing. So I should have had this at the top of my head. I will give it to you quickly. We have twenty-seven currently on the waitlist, the most recent one as of June eighth, twenty twenty-two. We also have sixteen properties from the last go-round of pulling the data of non-compliant properties. So I kind of need you all to determine a path forward, and if we work through the waitlist or work with the non-compliant. Not sure what that is.
I'm sorry, I have a clarifying question or two.
Sure.
So I want to make sure. So there's, you said a hundred and forty something have licenses for this year.
We have issued as of the packet data last week when I sent it to Lori and to City Hall staff, a hundred and forty-three licensed and issued for twenty twenty-two that count towards the cap.
Why aren't you allowing all the way up to the one seventy-one?
I, I, I'm just looking for guidance. If that's what you wanted to continue to do, I, you know, I kind of was not sure what, where you were going to be in this conversation. And so I just want clarity and direction, but that's what you're ready.
Okay, so you're hoping to figure out how to get to the one seventy-one after this conversation.
Right, and I'm just.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's interesting because I thought we were already processing up to the one seventy-one. So we actually haven't allowed all of those to move forward yet, even though that's currently how our code is written is to allow.
Well, so part of that is that people decided to not continue for a variety of reasons or didn't finish their licensing or, you know, didn't renew, and we gave, you know, that grace period. So there also was a changing as well of those that had been a class one that are now needing a class two with multiple licenses. So there's a lot of different levers happening. And so instead of getting anyone upset, I just kind of am holding the line to understand what is happening and what is the consensus to move forward. And I issue that immediately.
Okay, that's really helpful because I think in addition to other measures that we might want to talk about tonight, I think we have to figure out how we want to deal with the waiting list when there are, what'd you say, fifteen or sixteen non-compliance? So one potential option is you don't release new licenses until the non-compliance are resolved or, you know, some of these other issues that are almost kind of holding you up of not really releasing those new licenses until those issues are resolved, one way or the other. That way, we're not kind of like giving licenses away willy-nilly. You know, we're really making sure we're doing all of our homework on each and every one before giving away a new one because it's a really big deal to give away a license or to, sorry, to issue another license. So I think that is almost another part of this conversation that I hadn't even really anticipated tonight.
Sorry.
That's okay. I mean, I think it's really important.
I, I just kind of wanted consensus and management to decide. I did not feel that that was appropriate for me to be making those decisions, and I haven't had clarity about it. And then one other thing I'll just mention, every single time since really about early mid-April, I've been including Jackie as housing director for Lake County, as well as Christie Galarza and all of City Hall staff as CC to the correspondence when people inquire about a license. And we also just kind of mentioned, as we kind of go through the process and adding them on the list, that there is opportunity to long-term rent your home. That's considered anything thirty consecutive days or more. And I think that Jackie has successfully been able to, at least one that I'm sure of, if not two property owners that have decided to advance forward with long-term renting instead of short-term renting, still on the waitlist, but deciding to move forward, knowing.
Wow, that's amazing.
An immediate solution. So I.
Good work on that.
Wanted to share that.
Hey Gabby, this is Greg. To your point, I think that this is our first year, you know, really working at this level. But I think in the future, we need a cutoff date for non-compliance. And I mean, I know that, you know, this year we're really trying to be as as reasonable as we possibly can in terms of the people who are non-compliant, but at some point, you just have to draw a line.
Right. Well, I think there's a cutoff date, but I also, for example, here's some, here's a policy decision we could make is we could say we hold those fifteen or sixteen licenses until we go through the full compliance process and we don't give out new licenses until the compliance issues are resolved. I mean, that's something we can talk about, but that essentially, if you're giving away the licenses all up to one seventy-one and then you still have sixteen outstanding, we essentially have a cap of one eighty-six or whatever.
Right.
So I would like to talk about that.
Yeah, that's why I wanted you to have that conversation. Also, just one last thing that I'm, I'm going to just shut up, get out of the way, but you also want to be cognizant of not incentivize people to be naughty and get on the naughty, non-compliance list because they think that then you're going to prioritize them first over people that are being good stewards and following the rules and regulations and saying, oh, you're at a cap or I'm checking in and I'm getting on the waitlist. So you do need to consider that as well.
Right. Right, that makes sense. Um, so one other thing, and then I'll let other folks chime in. I just want to give council a recap of some of the options that planning commission discussed in our last meeting as potential additional measures. Is a lot of us were talking about how we don't necessarily want to rely on the assessor's database. So this twelve percent. Now that we kind of know what the number is, maybe we actually pick a number rather than a percentage. That's one option. So let's say we freeze it at one seventy-one or freeze it at some other number that's in the ballpark. If, if people in this, on this call or in this room think that one seventy-one is too high and I am, I am in this camp, I will speak for myself. My suggestion would be to freeze it and step down, so that means licenses would retire over time to some lower number, maybe one fifty, maybe one twenty-five. I don't know. I'm kind of open for discussion there. And then a couple other things that were on the table a couple of years ago, and this is a little bit of a heavier lift in terms of how we would implement this, is a lot of cities have done this only two per owner. So this would disincentivize some institutional investors of, so you can only have two per owner. I don't really know how many people this would affect. I don't know how many people own more than two, so maybe it's worth doing our research before we have a big discussion around that, if it's not, if it doesn't actually do anything. And then bringing back the midterm rule, which is you need to own it for two years. And before you can do it, but if the waitlist is long enough, it kind of creates that rule in and of itself, because if the waitlist is long enough, someone would potentially be on the waitlist for multiple years. So they would know in advance that they wouldn't necessarily, when buying a property, be able to short-term rent it anytime in the near future. And that would, you know, weigh heavily on their decision about whether to buy that property. So those are some of the items that we discussed at Planning Commission.
I.
Reactions? Go ahead.
Over camp of wanting to very possibly lower the number and then let attrition bring us down to that number. I just want us to, to always remember the short-term rules. One of the things we talked about in great length is that short-term rules have value to our economy. They're an important economic driver. So we're trying to find that balance between community character and the economics that are derived from short-term rentals and the fact that we don't have enough beds in Landville to accommodate tourism year-round. So just, just a thought, but I am, I am on board with lowering the number and letting it lower itself over a number of years.
Thank you for that reminder, Greg. Yeah, I think we, we want to balance all of those factors. Thank you for that reminder, Greg. Yeah, I think we, we want to balance all of those factors.
Um, I'd like to make a comment. Cool. So yeah, I think I'm on the same camp as mayor. And I do recall, you know, I just want to kind of bring it back to a few years back when there were a lot of complaints about there aren't enough diversity of restaurants, there isn't enough, you know, all these things in Leadville. And just in general, I do think tourism did enable that to happen. I generally like my, my personal thought is, yeah, the percentage, I prefer percentage versus like a flat number, just because it ebbs and flows with the number of people that are actually in Leadville. And, you know, it's, it's more representative of the population. What I'm actually concerned about in the next year, and I think this is just a time, you know, a timing thing, is just the fact that we are, are in a recession, going into a potentially deeper recession, and the impact that that's going to have on the town. Knowing that it a hundred percent has to do with people's discretionary income. And if, and you know, my, my, what I think about is if the local residents don't have money to spend, you know, at a coffee shop or a restaurant or whatever, then don't we need to rely on some of that tourism dollars to keep those businesses operating? And so I just want to, you know, throw that out there. Again, I'm not, I'm not saying we should increase the cap by any means. My thought is, should we just keep it for now? While we're going through, really, we're gonna go through a very tough period in, you know, the US history. Wait it out and see what happens in the next year. And, you know, we still haven't issued all hundred and seventy licenses. Shouldn't we see what that looks like? And then reevaluate, you know, later down the road. That, those are just my thoughts.
Thanks, Nadine. I do also want to bring in the commercial lodging into this conversation in that we do have a lot of commercial lodging establishments and they're doing really well. But through some of the work on the tourism panel, there's actually times when they're not full. They, they have rooms open, they have beds open. And so I think there, there is some room to try to focus on our commercial lodging establishments, which bring more revenue to our community in terms of tax dollars than using residences for lodging.
Why, why do you think they bring more revenue? I'm not sure I understand.
Well, I mean, in terms of the tax, the tax dollars, they contribute there because of the commercial tax and
Oh, property tax.
Property taxes. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And there's potentially some new hotels coming online in the next couple of years, which is really exciting. And I think those will really bring a lot to the community on the commercial lodging side. So I'm hoping in the future, maybe we don't have to rely as heavily on using our residential neighborhoods for lodging tourists and we can really focus having them more in the commercial properties.
I can not, I wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, I was just, my comment wasn't in line with what was being discussed, so I stepped back, but my, I guess my question was regarding the noncompliant properties, which I agree, we should have a time limit on allowing them to come into compliance before we give their license away to someone on the waiting list. And, but my question is, is for Sarah of the noncompliant properties that we have, why, what are some of the reasons that they're noncompliant? And is there a particular time limit that lends itself nicely to the reasons that that they're noncompliant for? Like I, I don't want to shut people off too abruptly without giving them the time they need, for instance, to get whatever permit or repair or whatever.
I think there's been a capacity issue in terms of following through with an additional letter. I know I had drafted a secondary letter. We sent out the original letters. We had some return to us, so some were returned mail and we got the addresses directly from the assessor's office. And so, you know, finding a lot of these individuals, particularly if they're not locals, can be somewhat of a challenge. So it may just be that they are completely unaware or can say they never received the letter, you know? So we also need to, you know, work on the arm that hasn't really been developed in a robust way, just because of turnover at the city and staff capacity in terms of the compliance and enforcement part of this conversation. So I think those are really good conversations to have. And I can participate where you need me or would like me to, but I think there needs to be dedicated staff working to get them into compliance. Uh, so the short answer is that our first round of sending out letters was relatively successful and it got the attention of people and they called us because they were like, whoa, I don't want potential penalty and or, you know, getting a fine or, or other items. And so they called and clarified, oh, I used to, a lot of it was, I used to short term rent and then COVID happened and I just haven't taken down my listing. And I would follow up with them with an email capturing that we had a phone conversation, what we said in the conversation and kind of holding them accountable. Like, okay, you said that you're no longer short term renting. You understand if you do not take the listing down, it's a potential that you'll get another letter in the future. So we recommend you removing your listing. So it's been some of that. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I just, that is very helpful. It makes me, since at least some of it is, is staffing and capacity at, at our level, it makes me a little more willing to be patient and not rush into the waitlist quite so quickly.
You want to go?
No, go ahead.
I'll just, uh, just facts. Out of the hundred, if you add up a hundred and forty three folks that are under current agreements, and they actually have a license, and we have twenty seven on the waitlist and sixteen on the noncompliant list, if you add them all up, ultimately, we have greater than ninety percent compliance, which is pretty darn good, meaning either people are playing by the rules and waiting or they are, they have a license and only sixteen out of a hundred and eighty six folks right now that we know of are, are perhaps not adapting to our current ordinance on short term rentals. And if you think about that, like with any sort of innovation, adoption, the laggards historically are about sixteen percent of the people lagging behind and they don't want to change it all. You might not ever get them to change. They're gonna, they're gonna be the, the people that won't ever, they'll just resist until the futile end. Uh, so with less than ten, with less than ten percent noncompliance, we're doing really good, I just want to say. And, uh, and then on top of that, Miss Day also talked about the fact that some of those folks on the waitlist were complying even more by saying, you know what, I'm turning to long term rentals, which is a benefit to our community. So I, I think we're in a, we're, we got, we got some cleanup to do, but I just wanna in my personal opinion, I think we're doing pretty good and this ordinance is working out pretty well. If we're looking for direction to miss day for one of our outcomes for today's meeting, if we have sixteen folks noncompliant and we have twenty eight licenses remain, remaining, I think we could probably give twelve, you know, get the top twelve on the list a license. I mean, I think that's an easy low hanging fruit. Uh, I don't know what we're gonna do in noncompliance, but I think that low hanging fruit, moving it up to twelve, you know, moving it up to twelve until we figure it out or have perhaps a better recommendation. And I am with, uh, is it chairman, chairman to news?
Chair.
Or Chair Bowler, but with Nadine that
Alternate.
Alternate chair.
Yes.
Oh, you're an alternate.
Alternate commissioner, yeah.
Yes, pardon me, Nadine. We also did, uh, decide as a city council with the, you know, with the plenty zoning input that we were gonna go at twelve percent for a twelve percent cap right now. And I'm with him that why don't we just let it ride out for a little bit longer to see how it goes before we change? Uh, I think we just have to see how it goes and see if we can get more people into compliance and stuff. So those are just my.
I, I think I'd like to say real quickly, I think the reason we kind of freaked out is because the, the increase of thirty wasn't because we increased two hundred and fifty residences, it's because we got a different accounting, you know, and so we're going, what just happened? You know, and I think that's the issue. And so the idea of going to a number would, would prevent that from happening again, you know, increasing by another thirty next year. So anyway, but I think Christian was.
Yeah, I kind of wanted to speak to that point. As well, I'm personally in favor of lowering the number and setting it to a broad number, mostly because I think it's gives us an opportunity to set up appropriately, like which seems like for the most part, we're pretty successful in ducks in a row, just make sure everything is proper, you know, lower this rate to a, personally, I'd go with a one twenty five. Obviously, our community feels pretty strongly about that as well. Um, and there's some support for it, especially within, uh, same crowd of people who are in support of increasing for two A, right? So I think it's very important that we look at it from, uh, our tax revenues are increasing with only one hundred and forty three rentals, right? And only sixteen that note, of course, um, noncompliant. And they are really, really, really high rates. And maybe, you know, this, from what I've heard, that a lot of this is from, you know, tourists. And I think that we should sort out what we're gonna do with that money, how we should appropriately spend it, how we should plan for this before we continuously increase it. Um, because I think continuously increasing, it won't give us enough time to catch up for it. On top of this, I feel like we're not at a place right now where admin can handle it. I think we need to get that in sort as well before we, you know, lunge whoever at the potential issues that that may come with, um, in continuously increasing. But I, I mean, long term, I'm not against a percentage. I think short term, there's been too many issues to keep it a percentage. This increase was, I mean, scary to all of us, I'm sure. At least scary to me and a few other members. And I think that it's seeing these numbers of short term rentals go up and up and up sends not only the wrong message to the community that we're prioritizing tourists over them, over their housing, their potential housing, um, the current housing. And also just, I mean, we don't have stock. So like, we don't have enough local stock right now to support what we need. And we are seeing more and more people. I mean, just in the past five days, I've had multiple people, like an increase of two times the amount of people coming to us with eviction notices because rent prices are increasing because there's not enough of a competition, which is a basic part of capitalism, of a competition for long term rentals and giving out these many more and more and more short term rental licenses inevitably leads to less competition in the short, or in the long term rental licenses. I'm glad we can turn some of those into long term rentals while they're on the waiting list. But I think that it's important that we keep working to make sure that these houses that can be rented out to locals and can be at a competitive price so that there is competition. That happens, right? I think it's essential. I think we have to move that way. We can't implement any type of rent control, obviously. There's no, um, nor do I think that that would be a popular thing, right, to limit how much someone can rent, but legally, we can't do it anyways. So I think the best we can do is promote some type of com- competition in long term rental to start really tackling these issues that we just can't tackle locally with our laws right now. And I think it's important that we look at this number and we say, all right, well, even if this one seventy one increase is a fluke, it's still a pretty high number, to be honest. And we're not struggling in terms of tax revenue. We are at all time highs. We continuously break records every time. And it, it's time that we seriously look at this and limit it for a while, see where we're at, see if it levels out. Maybe this is just one of those booms that just happens and then never comes back and it's over. And all of a sudden, you know, the short term being so high doesn't matter anyways, or if maybe this continues increasing and we need increasing amount of short term rentals in the future. But I don't think the appropriate thing right now, given what the community is facing with housing shortages, with long term rental shortages, is to increase it. I think it is at best to limit it at the one seventy number, one seventy one number, and hopefully to lower it to a more appropriate number, which personally I'm leaning towards like one fifty.
Thank you, Christian. We have some heads up.
Um, yeah, let me, I'm, as the facilitator, I'm gonna make a quick comment and then I'll let Lori and then M and then Morgan go.
Would you repeat that, please? No, 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 I want.
I was just trying to, you know, chime in to keep the conversation moving. I have a quick comment and then I'm gonna let Lori and then M and then Morgan go. Another alternative, Christian, based on your one twenty five number, is that if we wanted to stick with a percentage, that's closer to ten, that's about ten percent. So we could also just move the percentage down and it would have a similar effect, but also grow as we get more units. So I just wanted to put that out there as another option. Um, Lori Simonson, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to, first of all, say thank you to Sarah Day because one of the things we should think about with whatever policy or program with the city puts in place is resources and you know, Sarah has a full time job, but she's agreed to, to help out with short term rentals. And so I want to first of all, say thank you. And second of all, just keep in mind, we don't have a dedicated person at the city to, to manage this. And we would love to have that at some point, but whatever system we put in place is as simple as it, as we can make it. And I do think a, a hard deadline for noncompliance would be good. This, this year, I think we've been kind and we're gonna send out a second letter. Uh, I think we've learned a lot of things about how to address the noncompliance issue and things that we can maybe do better next time, but I think a hard date where if they are not compliant by a certain date, they don't get the license and then we know how many red licenses are left at that point.
Go ahead, Ann.
Hi, everyone. Um, I've wanted to ask a question. I'm pretty new to being on this commission, so I probably just missed it in all the discussions that happened in the last couple of years. But when I looked through the survey results, I noticed that a lot of the different counties or towns reporting had some kind of maximum amount of nights that are allowed in the rentals listed. I know that I actually don't know the mechanism for how that would be tracked. And I know that it could be an issue for us in terms of compliance because of everything Lori just mentioned. So with that in mind, it's something that I noticed that we are not doing. And I just wanted to suggest that if we recommend keeping a percentage approach instead of a hard cap, that could be another mechanism we could consider putting into place to disincentivize some folks who might want a license but would decide not to if they realized there was a limit in place and would just then in general limit the amount of car and foot traffic that occurs in our neighborhoods, which is, I know just part of the experience of having so many of these units in our neighborhoods. So you all might have talked about that already and I don't want to rewind the clock by any means, but I just thought I would suggest it since I noticed when I was reading the results. And I agree with so many of the other things everyone's recommending. I personally would vote for a, uh, just a number cap. And what I had suggested last meeting was maybe going like in a tiered approach where we had set a goal and over the course of two years, work our way down so that as things turn over, we said, we slowly get there and still maybe have room to allow a few folks off the waitlist, but but I could be convinced to stick with a percentage as well, if we have some good ways to think about compliance.
Um, just to answer, well, like kind of your question, we did talk about that during the first round of figuring out the regulations. I think we decided it was too hard to track. The thing that's interesting about that methodology, though, is that it changes the economics of the property. And so if you list, if you're only allow a certain number of nights, you're not going to get those speculative investors that come in and say, oh, I can rent this out three hundred nights a year on an average price of, you know, a hundred bucks. Price of, you know, a hundred bucks a night or whatever. And get my profit like there, but it it changes the calculus of the investment. And so I think that's why. Um, those communities were doing that, but I think our decision to not use that tool was because. It was too hard to track, like. Whether people were doing thirty nights, sixty nights, et cetera. Morgan, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yeah, sorry, I missed the the first round of this. Um, so it sounded like it was a challenging topic then and. It is now too. Um, I guess one thing that I saw too in that report that was interesting was. Um, in Chaffey County where. They have a lower cap, I think it's like six percent or something, but. Basically, if you do, if you live in the county, you get to skip the line, so. Um, you know, people that live locally will always have a first option. At those short term rentals. Um, which, you know, to me is kind of interesting. Uh, just because, you know, it it keeps things local, it provides someone that's close by to work on these. Um, short term rentals and it's it's just kind of an interesting way to go about it. Um, and I guess my other comment too is I'm interested in, is there any sort of projection now that we're halfway through the year, like what? You know, what the number of of units might be next year if we stay the current course? And I guess thirdly, yeah, I I mean. I feel like I come up against this every day in the community, talking to people. Um, that the general consensus is, as I'm sure a lot of you guys realize is that there's there's too many. Um. And there's not enough, you know, housing options for. For a lot of people that want to be here and the word is out in Leveille, it seems like, and and you know, that attraction. Um, there's just, there's not anywhere for folks to go um to 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 live here. So. I would definitely be in favor of of a cap. I don't know what's most appropriate. Again, I'm I'm fairly new to this too, like M and. I'm trying to learn about what what you guys have done because all of you have put in a lot more work on it. Then um some of us new folks, but. Um, it it definitely seems appropriate to to provide some sort of cap and then some sort of stepped reduction.
Uh, before anyone else speaks, the computer's gonna restart.
Well, actually, we may have signed in with the world zoom account.
They just went dark. I was, I was wondering who Maya Silver Silver was.
They're trying to switch, trying to switch it over.
Chair Voler Myada is our new deputy city clerk, and so she will be. She's in training to do the city council meetings, uh, so she's shadowing Lori Ty at this point, so she will be. The person who runs the meetings once she she's been with us for about two weeks.
Great, that's awesome.
Yeah, it's great to have her, so uh. But it seems like we've lost the room.
They're gonna come back. I just got a text from. Max, that it's restarting. Can you hear us?
Can you guys hear us well?
We can. Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, cool.
Okay. We didn't say anything of substance without you.
Oh, yeah, if I could chime in with a few things, um. I guess the first thing I would say is that. Uh, the whole short term rental issue is not going to solve any housing problems, I think. We've been through that about eight kajillion times now over the past few years. You know, these are second homeowners. Second homeowners do not rent their houses out long term because they use their houses. They also don't want their houses trashed by long term renters, so. For the eighth billionth time, I'll just say that. But um in terms of the economics of it. I've been looking at some of the spreadsheets that Tracy provides um with sales tax numbers. And those numbers would indicate. Um, just in terms of lodging. Uh, well, over eighty percent of sales tax numbers. From lodging are turned in by short term rentals. Countywide, that number is still over seventy percent. So what that tells me is is that the consumer, that's what the consumer is looking for. You know, and I I don't have anything against. The hotels and motels that we have in town. But if you're looking for more than a bed and a TV in a bathroom, those places don't offer much more than that. Wow, so. Um, the mayor mentioned how short term rent rentals are an economic driver. They are the economic driver in this town. Because we are a tourist based economy. There's nothing that's going to change about that. Um, that's what we are. We can't be something that we're not. So I think that you would see. With the windfall of sales tax. Is directly directly attributable to the advent of these short term rentals. We always face faced lodging challenges in this town. That's why we didn't, it wasn't that long ago, we didn't get that many tourists, we didn't generate a lot of revenue. But now we're able to because of short term rentals. Uh, when you talk about putting a hard cap. Which is what we're talking about here. A hard cap on short term rentals instead of a percentage to allow for no growth. Then you're putting a hard cap on generating revenue. And not only are you are you putting a hard cap on generating revenue through sales tax. But you're putting a hard cap on two A to. Which supports housing initiatives. Um, so I would absolutely not be in favor of a hard cap. Uh, we. Came up with this twelve percent cap. Over. Years. Of figuring this out. And as Max stated, the program is working almost perfectly. So I would be in favor of keeping things, keeping things the same. It's only been a little over a year since we put this ordinance into effect. Think we're being hasty. And I also think we're forgetting about all our constituents. That showed up to all those meetings that were not in favor of such a small cap or any cap at all. So it's it's not just anti S T R people that live in this town. There are plenty of people that are in favor of them. I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you, too.
Go ahead, Ting.
Um, so I agree with Tim. Um, I feel like, yes, we do have a housing issue, but I. Don't necessarily thinking think limiting short term rentals would. S- uh, solve the housing issue because from what I see is, I agree, like, it's mostly people. That own second homes or use it um on second homes that actually stays here uh that purchase the properties here. And if you look at the houses in Leville area that's for sale, um, it's pretty common. That the average price for per scrap fit is four hundred dollars or more a scrap fit. So when people pay that much money, uh, a lot of times they might, I. Have a feeling that they don't want to, and I talked to some of them, they don't want to do long term rental, they would rather leave it empty. If they can't do short term rental, they will rather leave it empty. And I feel like when we have. Um, people that are doing short term rentals in this town, there are more incentive. Um, for people investing in those old houses and helping to fix it up, to make it into attractive places. As a commercial lodging business myself, um, my experience is, you know. Uh, we can't accommodate all the guests. We get, there are a lot of times that we're full or we don't just, we simply don't meet the guest's needs. And uh especially when there are bigger families like that they're on family trip trips, they don't want to. Spend their night in a two bedroom motel room. They want to spend their time in actual houses. So I feel like. You know, one, the motel does not necessarily meet all the needs and, you know, we can't accommodate all the people that comes to that bill. Two, you know, like there are so many people that come visit that comes in as a family and. They don't want to spend their time in hotels or motels. So um personally, I. I'm leaning towards let it play it out, see how things are because I feel like there are so many things. Are changing economically, our inflation are ridiculously high. Um, and you know, the stock market is officially in a bear market now, so I feel like economy doesn't necessarily look super great. So I don't. Know how things will go economy wise in for this town and for tourism, you know, in the next maybe two years before anything recovers. Um, two, if we want to put additional um limits on it, I'm more. I'm definitely more in favor of a percentage rather than a hard cap. Because I feel like one, it lose purpose of even having a waitlist if we have a hard cap because. The the number is not going to change. Um, two, I feel like if we have a percentage versus a hard cap. A percentage will reflect more appropriately of like the number of houses growth. So if we have more houses being built in the rail yard and the projects around Turquoise Lake. Um, that potentially can open up additional licenses for people that's on the waitlist. Um, three, I'm strongly in favor of um enforce the short term rental um permitting um. Like. Regulations, meaning that I'm hoping like we will enforce it more so people will comply. And for the people that are non compliant, I'm in favor of doing everything we can to. Um, to actually not letting them having a short term rental permit. And giving those permit to the people that are want the waitlist and actually following the rules. That's all I have.
Thanks, Ting. Dana?
Dana, next.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to throw in um. That I know that we've been talking a lot about the in um interplay between. Short term rentals and housing availability. Um, I just wanted to bring up another um. Another aspect of short term rental management, and that is neighborhood cohesion, which I know drags us into. A discussion of concentration or density of short term rentals within certain. Neighborhoods, and I do not want to go there. I know we glanced on it slightly in the early discussions. But I just wanted to say that there is more at stake here than simply. Whether or not short term rentals help. Address or regulate short term rentals, help address our housing crisis or not. It's not that simple. Um, because I think that um short term rental um density and neighborhood cohesion has just as, it has. Uh, a additional impact on quality of life for for residents here as well. So I'm just gonna leave that there. And say I personally am in favor of a percentage that grows with our available housing.
Dana, can I ask you, would you be in favor of a lower percentage or keeping the percentage where it is? Because I'm. I'm kind of tallying votes in my head in terms of like who's for what, and I just. I don't want to waste P and Z's energy on anything that's not going to be supported by council. So I'm really listening to what each of the council members where where you're at so that we can make a recommendation. That would be supported or to just le- leave it alone and revisit this in a year.
Yeah, I um, you know, I I think that jump in. The available slots took everybody's breath away, but I also understand that that was a matter of timing of when we. Uh, and what counts we actually used for our base. Number of residences and and not like suddenly we have all this many more places available. So I'm I'm trying to set aside my, you know, my sh- my my startle factor at that increase. Um, that being said, I thought that the process used to. Land on the percentage that we currently have was a good one, and I think. Um, you know, the people who came and uh the the residents who came in and spoke with us, I know felt that that was. Too small, but looking at the tremendous um. Uh, spreadsheet. Thank you, Lori Simonson, for providing that. You know, I think it's a re- I think it's reasonable, and I don't see a reason to change it right now.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Um, I would like to agree with Dana in that the the original reason we entered this conversation ever in the very beginning was community character. You know, protecting our communities. Now, uh, to that point and to David's point. We really haven't done that, maybe in the way we should have, in the sense that we don't regulate by block. You can have ten short terminals on one block and zero on another one. So that may be a future conversation. I'm I'm with you, Dana. I don't want to do that rabbit hole right now. But I think it's something we probably may want to consider in the future. Uh, the more I've heard from everybody, the more I think, you know, just sticking with with the current and just seeing. And not overreacting to this thirty, this thirty uh uh. Bump of of permits, uh, which is shocking. Uh, it caused all my surprise. Maybe that would be an overreaction uh to 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 try and deal with that on that basis. Um, but if it happens again, that we're all going to be apoplectic, so I'm not sure what to say about that.
I I will say to some of the points, I don't think that anyone feels like this is the solution to housing. Um, much like I hope that no one feels that affordable housing is the solution to our housing crisis right now. It's not. Um, it's a combination of a lot of things. To address a crisis. It's never just one thing that we do to address it. It is a combination. Uh, intentional, built out combination of we care about this, this is what we're going to attempt. If it doesn't do anything, revert it. If it helps. Then great, we know where where we can put some leverage on it, but a crisis is something that we have to attack from multiple aspects, considering the. Uh, you know, it's a crisis. It's not something that we can just sort of wanting at and hope it, you know, sticks. Affordable housing isn't going to fix our insanely over inflated housing costs um that. You know, people should be able to buy. So you just want to keep that in mind as well, that. By no means do I, and I hope no one else suggests that uh limiting S T Rs is the end all be all for housing. Um, nor any other individual projects. It is a culmination of these things.
Go ahead, Tracy. Go ahead, Tracy.
You, um, I have a couple of comments. First, I want to address Sarah's question. About somebody going from a class one to a class two. They should just go to the end of the line as far as I'm concerned. Okay with leaving the percentage for another year than seeing what happens. However, looking forward. We will be getting some affordable and attainable housing coming online in the next few years. And I think any deed restricted home should not be included in the housing unit count. That allows for additional. And my last, uh, comment is I agree that there should be a hard deadline. A non compliant, if they don't meet that deadline, they just get bumped.
Tracy, that's a really good point that as we, as deed restricted units get built, that those are. Set aside and not counted. Um, it seemed like there's a lot of nodding heads. So thank you so much for bringing that up. Sarah, I guess a question for you is, and maybe this is a Christiana question, is whether we need to change that. Line in the ordinance and officially do that, or whether that's more of a procedure. Thing that we can do from an administrative standpoint.
I would defer to legal advice on that. I don't know.
Okay, well, let's ask Christiana a question because if we need to. Jay, if we need to have a ordinance change that says how the, how the twelve percent is calculated. Maybe not based on, you know, what, it might be literally one sentence. It's hard to know. Um, or whether we can administer that programmatically. Um, my other question is related to the same thing is. Do you feel Sarah, like you got direction from this group on how to handle some of your waitlist issues? Or do we need to have like a clear set of policies and procedures spelled out for you? So that you can kind of finish up this year's programming and then you can follow that rulebook for next year.
Yeah, I'd prefer something writing, not just coming out of this to direct it and understand that that is the, the collective rationale. I just need some sort of direction. I didn't feel like it was my role now as a consultant and helping out to make that. You know, staff staffing executive type of decision.
Do you feel like you heard enough from folks to come up with like a draft? That then we could recommend and then council could approve or change and recommend. Like, I'm just trying to figure out the easiest way to give you direction on this without, you know. Doing this as a group think situation. She just called me. Hold on, I'm gonna go mute. Sarah's computer decided to reboot. Lori, do you have, so she'll be joining us shortly. Lori, do you have any ideas for how we kind of craft this? Procedural direction for Sarah.
Sure, I, just a couple of questions. Are you, are you talking about administrative process for dealing with the non compliance?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like maybe a little more direction on how to deal with the waitlist when people get. Notified that they're off of the waitlist, you know, things like that. I feel like we almost need like a little. A little bit clearer guideline. So, you know, she has her April through June, whatever it is, kind of procedures for each year.
Yeah, I think we can, I, I think we have enough to, to draw up some. Guidelines about when the first non compliant letter should go out, when the second one should go out, what's the hard deadline? And then what we do with the waitlist. Basically, my understanding from the discussion is that, uh, until we. Know how many people are essentially going to comply or not. Um, we're not gonna take the waitlist up to the maximum number. I mean, we can obviously take the waitlist up to whatever the number is. Minus the non compliant folks. But and, and as we find people, if they say, look, I'm not gonna get a license this year, we can free up somebody on the waitlist. But we won't, we won't exceed the maximum. Ever with who's on the waitlist versus who's non compliant, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think Max might have a couple of things to add to that.
Okay, go ahead, Max.
I just wanna put a little more flesh on, uh, Lori's ideas. I mean, if we're gonna look at numbers, I would say we could. Get twelve of them because twenty eight minus sixteen is twelve, right? And so, uh, we could, we could get those licenses for the twelve on the waitlist pretty much right now. Get the next second, second letter of notice nine compliance out in the next thirty days. And have a response due within those thirty days of the second notice of non compliance and wait to see what happens before we. Go down the other sixteen that's available.
And I would just say on a council, I refer Gency, I, I would maybe give him less than thirty days. I, I might give him. Fifteen or, or twenty at this, at this.
Two days is what.
The only reason I say that is, is that, you know, we, we, we probably wanna figure out how to close this process out for this year. And let people know on the waiting list if they're gonna get on or off, but.
You gotta remember who I work for normally is for a service. So if we give somebody thirty days, they've been waiting, waiting on us for at least a hundred. So, you know, that's a, that's a really good thing. Yeah. Yeah, I'm okay, but I, I think we could go ahead with twelve and, and whatever the, that number is. Let's get that second letter of non compliance out as soon as we can.
I would say you have two weeks, two weeks.
Sarah said, so number ten on the waitlist is wanting nine licenses. So do I give him two of those and have him wait for the other seven or move past him to the others on the list?
So it's a very specific situation. So maybe it's not appropriate to talk about that specifically, but when someone change, when someone went through land use process to get multiple licenses. And only one counted towards the cap situation changed, and now they need all to count towards the cap, then it does kind of create this. Pinch point in the pipeline and those anomalies could happen in other cases as well. So I, I. In my recommendation is he's on the waiting list number ten through nineteen, so who goes licenses get released. In order of when they come up. Okay, got it. I don't, I don't think they'd need to be treated that differently. Um, so what I'm hearing is that there's.
By the way, I can speak to that. I'm fairly certain.
Really, Nadine, I really don't wanna talk about specific circumstances. Uh, I'm really trying to talk about like higher level policy.
Sure.
So I don't really wanna go there. Um, so what I'm hearing is that folks wanna keep things how. It is for the most part, maybe check back in a year. Let's fix some of these process issues. So, I mean, that's, I think that's where we're at. That's kind of what I'm hearing from the general consensus. So I did have another thought is that as the real yard neighborhood starts to become more occupied this year. You know, as I drive by, I see a lot more lights on in those houses, which is awesome. Um, a lot of those properties have ADUs. And I think there's huge potential there for. Um, trying to get some of those homeowners to rent those ADUs out as long term rentals. Um, and or help making sure they understand the short term rental program. So they're not advertising those ADUs as short term rentals. Without understanding the program and getting on the waiting list, et cetera. Because if they're full time residents, of which there seems to be a mix, if they're full time residents. They can get a class one license for their ADU. If they're not full time residents, they need to go through the S T R class two program. And a lot of those folks are new to town and I just don't know if they know about. The whole system. And so I'm just wondering if maybe we can encourage Jackie to do some. Rail yards homeowner outreach, cause there's a lot of potential. Studio apartments, one bedroom apartments. I don't know how they're configured. Um, I think there's a lot of potential there. Cause a lot, almost every single family house has a big ADU above the garage. Okay, so three, Sarah just said three of the twenty seven are rail yard properties. So it seems like the word is getting out to at least some of them.
Yeah, Gabby, maybe, um, uh, who's selling all those homes?
Is it Andrew Party? I think it's Andrew Party is the listing agent on most of them. Yeah.
You're saying Mark Heidi. Well, I would hope that the Realtor. Is conveying that message. But maybe they're not.
I have heard of a lot of cases of Realtors not conveying that message and then people thinking they bought something. That they can use one way and they cannot use it that way. So. Um, I know that Jackie is working on Realtor communication and education on that front.
Yeah, yeah, maybe leaving that in Jackie's hands is a good thing.
It would appear we've reached some good conclusions though.
Yeah, this has been a really great conversation. What should we talk about next? You're talking about parking? How's that going? No, I don't need to keep everyone's time. This has been, it's really great to get together with counselors who are new faces on P and Z. That, so I'm glad you got to meet some of our new members, um, and to spend time with. Um, this group, so. I think Lori, can you ask, um, Christiana, or maybe we can take this off email, the question about how to change. The language about excluding the D restricted properties. I think that's, that is one huge takeaway from this conversation. She's not on anymore.
I can do that too.
I, I have one, one question before we leave chair, Madam Chair Boda. The, the, uh, question is, is that we've all talked about we. Maybe should we, is this something that we should revisit annually? Biannually, what, I mean, we talked about, okay, we're gonna let it ride for now, but are we gonna. All of a sudden say, oh, we need to talk about it in six months or, or what? Should we talk about? I mean, I don't think we need to put it codified or anything like that, but like as a group, I'm just curious.
I think we should talk about earlier in the year because before the renewal period comes up next year, we go into this whole administrative burden again. To make sure that we're all the same. And we get the number from the assessor after the first of the year, right? Sarah.
That's what I was thinking is I think we get the number from the assessor and we kind of take a gut check. To have this conversation or not.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think it's a great idea. I think once we have the number, then we sit down and meet, maybe, maybe that's. January, okay, yeah.
So it makes, that makes sense. So maybe we're gonna revisit this in less than a year, but probably at a more appropriate time.
And the, the licenses run, remember, May one to April thirtieth, the renewal period opens up March fifteenth. So also keep in mind, like, if you wanted to change things, we would need to plan for that in advance. So if you decided to revisit it in January, it likely would affect the following year, I would think. But just with timing of ordinance changes, et cetera. So keep that in mind.
Sometime in January. Annual meeting.
And can we have pizza?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you so much for all your time. Um, just for a reminder for P and Z, cause this is kind of taking place of our regular meeting from last week that we canceled. Is that we are going to start work with our consultant on the land use table update. Um, next week on the twenty second. So and also it'd be good, council knows that we're working on that over the next couple of months. And so we're gonna be coming to you hopefully in the fall, late summer, fall sometime with a revision of. The land use table and what's allowed in which zone and consolidating and cleaning it up. So. Finishing that project some three years ago, which we stopped because of short term rentals, so. Full circle. Okay, well, thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Meeting adjourned seven twenty five for your records, Lori. Yep, bye.